Evening. My name is Ken Smith. I'm the Mayor of City of Vader. It's my pleasure and privilege to welcome all of you, residents of Vader and visitors, to this regularly scheduled Vader City Council meeting, which we'll officially call to order at 6:07 PM. And especially would like to recognize present with us, the elected city council members. I'm grateful to you as well for being here. We apologize for the tardiness and we will make sure that our next meeting will begin on time. So however with that, we should proceed with the roll call and we'd invite our city clerk to carry that out for us.
Andy Wilson.
Present.
Jason Daley.
Present.
Joe Schei.
Present.
Judy Costello.
Present.
And Ruth Creer.
Present.
And the mayor.
Also present. We have a full forum, so let's proceed now. As is our practice is to begin our city council meetings with an invocation. And I'm pleased to recognize in our midst this evening, the distinguished pastor of the Assembly of God Church within the city of Vader. And he's consented to offer the invocation. And so we invite all present to join with him. We'd invite you to take.
Thank you, Mayor Smith and councilmen. And before I pray, I do want you to know that we regularly pray for our city and for our city council and our city leaders. And I consider it a privilege to be here tonight, so thank you for your invitation. If you'd like to join me today, please prepare yourself in the manner to which you're accustomed to pray and join me if you would like to. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for the privileges, the rights that you've given us as a community, as a state, and as a nation. Lord, I thank you for these that sit before us, that serve our community, who give their time and their abilities to make this a better place for us to live. And Father, we want to pray for your wisdom tonight, for we know that it is only by the wisdom from above that we will prosper and grow and things will go well for our community. So Lord, I pray that you would just touch our hearts and our minds with your wisdom tonight and pray your blessing over our community, that we would prosper, that the people of this community would rise in goodness and righteousness, and that this would be known as a place where people want to live, where people want to raise their families, and Lord, a wonderful place for all of us to be. We ask, Lord, that you would watch over these proceedings tonight, that everything that's said and done would be honorable and glorifying unto your name. And we thank you for that now. We pray these sayings in the name of our Lord and Savior and soon coming King Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that Pastor Durham. Now let's now proceed with our pledge of allegiance and we'd invite to all please raise. And.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we'll proceed with the mayor's report. I would like to specifically invite members of the city council who haven't received this training yet, particularly those who are new, but even for those incumbent council members, you probably have been briefed by our city council, I mean our city clerk, that every four years it's required for elected officials to participate in a short course on local planning matters and open public meeting and public records training. And there will be a course on June 8th, 2016 that would be available for you. And that is being sponsored by?
Partially by Vader. We're the ones that called and said, hey, we want a training, we want it close, we want to make it easy for our council members to come and our other committee members to be able to come. And so they agreed to have it at the Lewis County Public Works Building.
Yes, across from Yardbirds?
Yes, across from Yardbirds. And they're going to gear it specifically towards very small cities. That was another thing that we requested was that the professionals would focus especially on very small cities and their issues, so we don't go and spend our time learning about things that big cities handled that we don't ever have to handle.
There is a difference. So we'll ensure that there are refreshments for all present. So we encourage you to mark your calendars and take care of that required training.
Six to nine.
At night?
Mm-hmm.
Does that work?
No.
But Judy?
It's past my bedtime.
But you may have already started.
You may have already had.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you did that Saturday one.
Yes. Okay. The next item quickly was I want to let your council members know that the Washington State Department of Transportation will be in attendance, as I think we mentioned to you, at our next city council meeting, for the specific purpose of talking about the resurfacing of 506 and the potential markings along the crosswalks that have been such concern. So thirdly, I felt it would be appropriate to inform the council that here we sit in the second week in April, and you recall, those of you who were seated last year, that you've approved $500 for stray cat and dog, specifically dog captures of dogs that are running loose. And the Humane Society would charge us $50 for any dogs that are brought to their facility. And so far, our records indicate that we've had no dogs captured, but we've had three cats captured. And each time, these are very earnest vigilant citizens within our community, and they have, on one occasion, they actually told us they had it, to others, they just went to the Humane Society, and then they called us. So I wanted to bring to the council's attention that there may need to be a clarification of practices, because I think it was primarily intended for stray dogs, unless I'm mistaken. But I felt obliged, inasmuch as they were well-meaning residents, to go ahead and cover the costs of the Humane Society. Now clarify?
Yeah, just an additional clarification is, these are not feral animals, these are adoptable animals. If somebody comes and says there's a feral cat or they've captured, we just automatically tell them, no, that that's not what we can put our money towards, it has to be an adoptable animal. So if that makes any difference, I don't know. But all the cats that have been dropped off have been friendly and physically handled by the people, so. And one of them so far?
I thought one of them was trapped, but anyway.
One of them so far has been adopted.
I see.
I don't know where the other two are, if they're still there or not.
This isn't intended to be a discussion item by the council, but we've expended $150 and within the next two to three months, it may be something the council will want to discuss. So it's just for your information at this moment. All right. We're also anticipating as summer emerges that our employees will want to take some vacation time. And particularly our sewer operator, Nev Pelter, has some Department of Ecology mandated tests that need to be conducted. And we anticipate that we ought to have in place a memorandum of understanding with the local community that would enable us to have coverage during his predictable absence. So I just want to let the council know that it is an administrative responsibility of the mayor and city hall, that the city of Winlock has indicated that if we were to approach them, they would be supportive of that sort of agreement. And I would like to engage in a conversation with them to establish that memorandum of understanding. Yes?
Is he certified?
Yes, Nev Pelter is certified.
I know the Department of Ecology.
Yeah, it's a requirement.
Come back on me because Dennis Montgomery wasn't certified. And I said, well, Dennis Montgomery isn't going to have the job anyway, and so they said, okay, and then.
Now that's not an issue in our situation. So and Winlock, of course, is well-certified and would cover that required element quite nicely. So I'll keep you posted in our efforts to make that happen. Okay. The last thing I've received via email, a very heartfelt invitation from city clerk and mayor of Toledo, inviting council members, elected officials, to attend a small city connectors meeting, which is scheduled for April 26th at Toledo High School, between 5:00 and 8:00 PM. Now I know a couple of you have already signed up for that. We do appreciate that. That's fantastic, that we'll have at least that representation. What is the amount that you would fee?
They didn't anything for us.
No, there's not a fee for you, and then they also get dinner.
Yeah.
They also get free dinner.
Then there's a free dinner associated with that. So I would, I've been there before and it's well-done and speakers are usually worth the admission price. So I encourage you all to anticipate that, and I know that Mayor Dobash would be grateful as many Vader acts as we can get there. That I think concludes my mayor's report. Now we'll turn the time over to the council for her reports that you might have.
Number one, have you ever contacted Lewis County about the water?
Yes.
Yes, and so would you care to?
We have not received an answer yet, but yes, we have extended. And I've talked to a couple of different people and they keep setting me up the ladder. So I haven't heard a definitive answer yet.
Well, I guess what it's going to take is take samples of the health department and then we'll start a plant deal.
Yes, that would be fantastic.
Because I know there's little things in my water. Tracy's.
Yes, our faucet's getting plugged with sand and residue.
Yes.
Yeah.
I haven't noticed that, but.
And so I hate to see a liability on the city for, that we aren't taking action on ourselves to Lewis County Public Works. It's a very simple job. All they got to do is get the fire department, which the fire department I know would love to do, they'd take their fire trucks and go out and.
I don't believe that that would suffice to meet the standards for clearing the pipes. John Strom, our former City of Vader water treatment employee, has done that for several years. He knows what he's doing, and I'd be absolutely shocked if, since he'd been doing it several years before he was hired by the county, he's not aware of the need for that. But we should get confirmation of it. I can tell you as a mayor that without being excessively accusatory, Lewis County, who's handling our water system, is creating some challenges for the City of Vader administratively. And I can attest to the fact that our efforts to handle those administrative matters, which I'd be more than happy to share with council members outside of this public meeting, has been met with some resistance, and it doesn't reflect all that well for the city or the county's handling of our water system. But so this is not inconsistent with the support and response that I would think that as elected officials you would expect to get. But like I said, I'm sure Jill or myself would be more than happy to share that information with you. So thank you for that question. Any other comments? Let's go to Judy.
First on my list is again a reminder of May Day, and I will expect to see everyone with your float at the parade on May the 7th, please. Jan and I will be needing some donations for cakes or cupcakes for our cake walk. And this is my only opportunities to get to say this. And then the next short thing I want to comment about is, two years ago, I was bit on the ankle by a snarly little dog.
I remember that.
No leash, very unhappy woman. So when these dogs come lurching at me, when I'm walking, and they're Dobermans and they're big things, how are we going to handle this? What are we going to do?
I would call 911 and deal with the problem on the spot.
When is a new resident to town? Should we politely go give that person the ordinance, just to make it clear? And does it count if the dog is running loose with the leash attached to his neck? He is on a leash, he just does not have master close at hand.
It doesn't count.
There's so many dogs out though, just all of a sudden.
I've always seen dogs. I haven't noted an inordinate amount at the moment, but yeah, I don't think anybody could argue with your perception. That's why we have the animal ordinance. And if we can capture them, we can transport them. But 911 would be an appropriate response.
Yes, and the state leash law says that your dog has to be under your control. So having a leash running wild is not under your control.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Well, I make another little comment. What are we going to do about all of this junk that's piled up in the city? I drive the city three or four times a day. And some backyards, fenced backyards, it's a health hazard with junk just piled up all over. And that's the same way with Park Road down there, where those places are all those, I guess they're abandoned, all abandoned, they don't take long to the county now, all of that property.
F Street.
F Street?
Yeah.
No, they don't belong to the county. Most of them are in private ownership. But that's an interesting question you ask, because it's, hopefully you will recall that that was the very question that led to the passage of the ordinances that we are in the process of applying. So you have done what you can do as an elected official. Now it's the city's privilege and opportunity to apply those ordinances. And we are doing that. It's painfully slow, but and you will discover tonight, one of I think are talking points, if not, not on the agenda tonight, but we're in the process of, there's one more step, as you've heard ad nauseam, but hey, these are the ordinances that the city council has passed, that need to have an interconnectivity that we've discovered in the application of them with Ron Kemp, our city building inspector, makes them difficult to enforce. And so Jennifer Robertson is almost finished her task, which we've given to her, what, 10 days ago or so, of connecting them in ways that are essential in order for them to be legally enforceable. We've spared you a lot of the administrative challenges associated with that action on the part of Jennifer Robertson, but she is an extraordinarily competent attorney, and she's fast and she is responsive. So we anticipate that we'll have resolved those nuances that, to her credit, she discerned as we've worked with her, with Ron Kemp. And we're, I mean, this is a slow but sure polishing process. When she's done, I would say by mid next week, it will enable us to more quickly, efficiently, and effectively address the very questions that you as a city council have established for us to do. So if you weren't aware of that, Mr. Wilson, I would just remind you that that's what you've done. That's what we are doing.
Well, I used to handle when I was mayor for different times, is I'd go down and take pictures and then I'd write a nice public relation letter to them, and we'd like you to have it taken care of, and a lot of the people would. They would see their picture, what their junk was, and with the public relation letter, not trying to force them or intimidate them or anything like this, and when they use them, well, they would take and clean it up, and that would be the end of it. It helped quite a bit. It's getting worse.
That was a golden era. I remember it well myself, but.
Ken, excuse me for interrupting.
Yes.
Is what we're talking about also, like the Quonset Hut that burned and that kind of thing? This is all just one big?
They are on a list.
The big listing, okay.
If you'd like to know what that list is, we could easily provide it for you. That Quonset Hut, I think it's number three.
Oh, okay.
So about that pile of garbage kitty corner from the fire station is the prime target of attention, and is when that, those four ordinances are melded together. It will give us some teeth that will force the entity that has that pile, and they know that, we've sent them very nice love letters, some not so loving, and that they just ignore them. So stay tuned and keep watching, because that pile of garbage is the litmus test for the City of Vader. They're obviously ignoring us, and we will, the day that that disappears will be evidence that you've got ordinances that are working.
Well, it's just my concern about the health hazard. You get much of little kids this summer going around with all of that junk, and who's going to be responsible?
The property owners.
People sitting right here.
No, the property owners will be responsible, because we have ordinances that are in place that we're applying. No, you will not be, you have done your job, and we're making it happen. I'm very proud of this council, as a matter of fact, for your efforts. Now, we had a member of the sheriff's department make the call.
For my day job, I'm a Lewis County code enforcement officer, so if there's something I can assist you with, you can just call me during the week, and I'd be happy to help you.
Thank you.
The solid waste rules for the state regulation allows me to enforce solid waste rules throughout the county, whether in your city or outside of your city.
Yeah.
It's one of the rules that I can help you with if need be.
We appreciate that offer, but the city has an employee who's focused on it, and I think we're in good hands, but we appreciate that support.
I don't have a comment on this, Perry, can I have a comment?
Perfect.
I've been trying to invite more people from our community to the city council meetings, and one of the things that I keep hearing is that some people are not arriving for the council meetings because of the prayer issue, the invocation that we say after we call to roll, I mean, after we do the roll call.
Yes.
And my, no disrespect at all, but my theory, my thinking on the subject is, is that if we could move that to maybe a prayer meeting right before the meeting, because I believe that once this meeting is called the roll, I mean, called the order, that it's a government, right? It's a government deal. Is that not?
No, it's not entirely accurate. Actually, Supreme Court, this all began after a survey in 2015 when the Supreme Court acted on a case that was initiated in upstate New York, ruled in favor of cities in their public city council meetings to begin with prayer, if they so chose. And that kind of opened the floodgates for the communities whose city council were in favor of that practice. So no, it isn't a violation of any particular state or federal law at the moment. But obviously, it goes without saying that the city council can decide as a council.
I'm just, I'm just thinking that, you know, we're kind of leaving some people out of our community because they won't come just because of that reason. I think it's something that we should.
Well, I think it's important to remember that there shall be no law initiated that would impose constraints on religious liberty in this country as part of the constitution and the amendments thereof. So you have to walk a fine line. There's a public free speech for all parties, but like I said, I'd remind you that the city council could decide whether or not to continue with the invocation, if you wanted to make it a matter of council agenda discussion. Yes. It was a decision by the previous city council to engage in that, to have an invocation. I'm obviously very supportive of it, but it's the council's, so I throw that out there for your consideration.
Well, I again would like to state my opinion, I do not believe we should be doing it. And I would be in favor if everybody else would be in discussing this again at another meeting.
Absolutely.
I've been hearing the same thing.
So if it's something that everybody would like to discuss, I certainly would like to.
That's the prerogative of the council members. So I gather that you'd like it on maybe the next agenda.
Perfect.
Dooley noted.
Thank you.
Got you. Any other comments by council members?
Well.
Then with that, we'll proceed.
I'm actually on, I think I'm on the list.
You are, yes.
Oh, I'm going to skip the one that's printed.
Yeah, you wrote over it with all your other comments.
I did.
Anyway, last meeting, I was attempting to get ahold of the state to add some Vader work into the Highway 506 paving project. Talked with them the day after the council meeting finally. It is too late to add on to that project. It's a large project, and they've had environmental studies and other administrative things, and it's just too late to add on to that. However, the county, I've talked with them, and they do have some projects going on in the area this summer, and they'd be more than happy to do work here in the city as well. It's chip seal only, it's not pavement grinding. And both Devin Jackson with AKS Engineering and folk with Lewis County have offered their services in identifying streets that would be qualifying, that would qualify for chip sealing. It's not all streets, obviously, just streets that are better than our worst streets. So anyway, so that should be coming here soon. On May 12th at 10:00 AM, I think I've told you about this meeting before, it was later in the month, they just had to bring it up a little earlier to May 12th.
Yes.
Devin Jackson with AKS Engineering, and I can't remember Chris's last name, but he's with the state TIB program, he's a regional engineer. They're both coming to town, and they're going to walk around, I'll be with them, and anyone else is welcome to come. And they're going to talk about our TIB grant proposal for this year, so.
That'd be excellent, yeah.
So we'll try, try again.
How long as they do the streets that are used the most?
It would be, yeah. The TIB grants are main arteries, so previously we've did, we tried for A Street in front of the post office, and here at the fire station, and out because of the fire trucks. So more to come.
Are there anything that the city needs to do prior to doing their bids or anything like that, like getting the streets as prepared as we can?
I don't know. I don't believe so. I think it's, it'd be all-inclusive, I believe, if the county came down for chip sealing. They said they could do some patchwork as well, though, if we needed that.
Really?
Yeah.
My conversation, just so the council knows, over the past several years, is that chip sealing is not a magic bullet for the streets of Vader. They're pretty restrictive on the. They're pretty restrictive on the surfaces that could benefit from it, and I'm not even sure that the street in front of the post office...
Would qualify.
Well, we'll see. I mean, I hope it does, but the real need, I think, is the actual paving, and I'm not sure in front of the post office, I mean, the fire station would even, so I'll be most intrigued, but I wouldn't get your hopes up too much for a chip sealing.
Well, we'll get, do it for informational purposes, figure out what streets can qualify, see what a couple of engineers have to say, and then we can decide what we want to do with that information.
I wish we, instead of having about 20,000, that we had 60,000. Then we could make an appreciable difference in this community, but hey, that's not our reality at the moment.
Well, there's one thing that shouldn't be looking at by the post office, which is 506 and A Street, are clay tile mains storm drain is, it's getting worse by the day. You know what I'm talking about?
Between the post office and A Street?
Yeah, right there at the post office, on this side of the street, wherever they park and everything, but just as you come down here, that clay tile, see, everything in this city, all the way from the school on that side, is all clay tile storm drain. That's why we have so many of that are bad in that part of the city.
Where, where does that run out, Andy?
It runs out to the old crawl, but it can't go out to the old crawl anymore. Because this is what started your problem.
Plunged down by the bridge.
Why, I stood right there and watched Burlington Northern dig the clay tile out of 506 that was going underneath the railroad tracks, period. Ended up settling, but I didn't, I couldn't do nothing about it.
Well, I know, Mr. Wilson, you brought that up several times in the past few years. We've actually put a camera in that pipe, and it's not collapsing in front of the post office. And we've monitored that since you first brought that up. We have not detected any further subsidence underneath that pavement, so I don't know what the basis is for your concerns, but for sure, that pipe has collapsed downhill towards your restaurant. That is a fix, that it would be nice if we could...
And you might back water up to that point, maybe you're doing some damage to that one, but...
Yeah, but if the pipe's not broken, then it's hard to know what the impact was, and I know we fixed the backup that was up past the lion's hole, and you'll note that that's not creating a leak anymore.
Right.
But there are so many weaknesses in our surface water pipe system. We don't need to pretend that we have, are anywhere near solving it, especially since you probably all discovered that our waste treatment, INI numbers have not been reduced at all since the INI projects were completed this past year. That is shocking, and it needs to be, I think, addressed by the council, but given the time constraints in that this mayor's report and council reports aren't the forum to, to engage in these conversations, but they need to be put on the agenda so that we can tackle them for real.
You know, I do have a question about that, if we could put that on the agenda for next time, because I have four of those properties that need that side sewer done, and I do not qualify for all of this money, but are we still going to be doing them since it's not working?
Well, the money would be available, but it is, I wish that we'd gotten three times as many people to sign up, but we know that we are really an economically depressed community, but we didn't get that many economically depressed citizens to sign up. What did we end up with in total?
Total, I think, was about 40, 35 or 40, I think.
So actually, did ecology think that they had enough people to really get a gauge on whether it worked or not?
Well, the way we know it hasn't is because Nev does a metering readings when we have heavy rainfall, and the numbers have, if, if anything, not been reduced, they've increased. But of course, we've had the wettest winter in the history of the state of Washington, but we haven't had the pipe, you know, we've had some of our sewer lids actually pop off because of the amount of rainfall in our system. That didn't happen this past year, but we're getting extraordinary amounts of rain whenever it begins to rain. It dries out quite nicely, but I can tell you that when we do have this discussion, and I'm remiss to even go down this path, but you've asked the question, we're studying it, and we're about to consider an effort from within the residents of the community ourselves to do what the engineering company, obviously, didn't take the time and do the research sufficient to know if they were actually fixing the problem. We think it's starting around F Street, and we would, we would consider getting a team of individuals who would be assigned locations, and when it begins to rain hard, we will just go and lift up the manhole covers, and we'll watch which pipes are accumulating the most water during the rainy episode, and we'll begin to chart where we see the rainwater coming from. It's, we can put a man on the moon, but these engineering companies, they can't seem to figure out in 10,000 feet of piping where rainwater is coming from. But the likely culprit is up on F Street because of the previous owner of that property who installed pipes that have no rhyme or reason that we believe have been connected into our sewer system. And they've cracked, and we've probably got one or two that are receiving water from our underground stream or springs, no less. So there, that's your unexpected report, but we're watching. I've been monitoring these numbers and have been, just in the last two weeks, shocked and most mortified, because that is going to impact our ability to take care of our three-megawatt waste treatment system. You cannot treat a million gallons of rainwater in a day in a waste treatment system that we can possibly afford.
So is that, is that on our upcoming agenda, rainwater?
Yes, it is now.
Perfect.
So thank you. Now, that's a positive from the council discussion. But it would have been on there anyway, because it's, it's the problem, it's the elephant in the room problem for the city mayor. All right, so with that, let's expeditiously move forward here. Special reports. I know we have a guest who's with us, who's asked to take some time on our agenda this evening. I didn't catch your name, but would you mind introducing yourself and take the podium?
Speaking to me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm here representing, I'm on the board of directors of the Human Response Network, and I'm here because we're attempting to get proclamation from you by announcing this as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Now, HRN helps the community and victims of sexual assault. We go out and do some preventative education. We speak to schools, churches, or other groups that are interested in this topic, trying to make people aware of what sexual assault is and ways that it may be prevented. We also assist law enforcement who have victims of sexual assault. Anytime, night, or day, we might get a call, and our advocate will go out and assist that victim. They will be there with them, they will go with them through medical exams, they will go with them to court hearings if it gets to that point, but we're hugely supportive of the victim. We have support groups. Many times, a victim will have to go to a medical exam, and until very recently, that only occurred in Olympia. And as big as our county is, transportation is often a problem, so we would provide gas cards to help them purchase gas, bus tickets if needed, taxis when required. We do have support groups in English and in Spanish for victims. We also go into the jails or juvenile detention, and we do have a 24-hour crisis line. There are times when, even as well-trained as our advocates are, the people are needing psychological help, and we have resources that we can help them get to somebody who is trained specifically in that, who's a psychologist. Again, that is costly, and if insurance won't cover it, then we have some resources to help them fund those visits to the psychologist. And that is pretty much it. I don't know if you might have some questions for me, but I'd be glad to accept your proclamation.
Okay. Any questions?
Allison.
Okay, well, thank you. This, I think, will be our third year in a row that we've supported your services. So I personally, I began to read it last council meeting, but we now have two proclamations that we're in support of, but it's the mayor's prerogative I would like to make as a matter of public record, and I would like to approve this, and so I would like to read it at this moment in time. "A proclamation to the residents of Vator. Whereas sexual assault awareness month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every community member of the city of Vator, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community, and statistics show one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. Whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age 18. Whereas young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence, and youth ages 12 through 17 were 2.5 times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. Whereas on campus, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. Whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas when we actively get involved, we can prevent sexual violence. The first step is increasing education, awareness, and community involvement. It's time for all of us to take action to create a safer environment for all in the city of Vator. Whereas the Human Response Network is the recognized accredited service provider for sexual assault advocacy services for the citizens of Lewis County. Now therefore, I, Kenneth D. Smith, Mayor of the city of Vator, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Vator. We ask that community members recognize the serious impact of sexual assault and to support and embrace the significant role each of us can play in the prevention of sexual assault. Signed, sealed, and dated this 14th day of April 2016." Thank you for listening, and thank you for your services with the April.
Do you want to sign that and give that to her?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Man, I appreciate your support.
Bet you. Now, with that, we'll proceed now with our agenda with the approval of the agenda as written. I don't have any changes to bring to your attention. Anybody on the council have changes to it?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I would like to add parks, and then I would like to add report on City Hall parking. Please.
All of the same item? Parks and parking?
I was afraid to do both together.
We can do it separately.
I didn't know if the conversation would lead into something else.
You need to make it in the form of a motion, however, so make a motion to add two items.
I would like to make a motion that we add to the agenda for April the 14th, 2016, parks as number four, and as number five, report on City Hall parking.
You've heard the motion submitted by Mrs. Gustello to add two items to our official agenda. Item number four to relate to a discussion on parks, and item number five, report on city parking. Is that in front of City Hall?
Report on City Hall parking.
City Hall parking, is that right? Do we have a second for that motion?
I have a second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Now let's go with the minutes approval from our previous city council.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March 24th, 2016.
Okay. Mr. Shai submitted a motion to approve the minutes for the date specified. Do we have a second?
I will.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, she carries, a voucher approval. Do you have a motion? Do you have the figure available?
I think they have it written in. Maybe Andy doesn't have it yet, but I think everyone else has it written.
Do we have a motion?
Yes. I make a motion to approve the vouchers for the 1st of April 2016 in the amount of $19,474.07.
Okay, Mr. Shai has submitted a motion to approve the voucher expenditures in the amount specified. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Seconded, okay, by Mr. Daley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, we have one, okay, the motion is carried, so...
And my only reason is, is because I wasn't available to see them or go through them.
Okay, that's wonderful, okay. Public comment?
Yes, we have a public comment. I'd like to remind council that I only have two signatures on the vouchers, so I need at least one.
Don't leave without signature.
One is marked up, but Tracy Durham. Now, we have this topic on the agenda already. Do you want to make part of it?
Would I be able to speak to that during the council's discussion?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, then I'll forego my public comment and wait until the topic comes up.
Perfect, yeah, it's the first, no, second item in the agenda. All righty, then we'll proceed with our official city business. The first item is, you will note, has to do with an ongoing vacancy that we've had probably for the last two to three months on our planning committee. And I'm, you should have a letter in front of you, and I'm pleased to report that I've identified an individual who, as you will note in the letter, I believe is well-qualified to serve on that committee. He's with us this evening, Scott Gross. He's lived in the community for over a year now?
Just about a year.
About a year, mhm. There's no residency requirement in terms of time to be a member of the planning committee, but I think he has attributes, qualities, that would be, served the community well as a member of that committee. So I present Scott Gross to you to serve as a member and to get your confirmatory vote as a member of the planning committee.
Of course. Yes, may I ask, who else is on the planning committee? This is a committee I'm not aware of.
Oh, for heaven's sake.
No, well, there's two of us. And how often do they meet, and what are they up to?
As needed.
As needed?
Mhm. Gary Cooper is our professional planner for the city. And he oversees the business of that committee. And they meet as needed. I think it's been three or four months since they've had their last meeting. But Jill, do you happen to have the current names of it?
Bob Doc. Bob Doc is on. Peter Smith is on. Victoria Parsons. And?
John Farman.
John Farman, thank you.
John Farman, yes, he's our latest candidate. And they will handle matters related to building permits, applications, and exceptions.
No, that's administrative, mostly planning and zoning and...
If there is a permit that requires specialized attention, they will deal with that.
So city planning, like, I don't know, development?
Yes, land use.
Land use, zoning, development, okay, okay.
These are the folks that met for the public hearings on marijuana zoning ordinance? If you were present for those?
Yes. They don't make decisions, they make recommendations that are then submitted to the council for your action. You can then decide what, of course, actions you want to take on them. But I don't think we've had any actions in the last two or three years other than the marijuana issue, which was sufficient.
Well, I tried to change ours, but we didn't have a planning committee. I tried to change our zoning down at the mini-storage for that cell tower last year. We didn't have a planning committee at the time.
Yeah, we've almost had a planning committee, but it may not have reached their involvement. That was a pretty complicated topic. And when it comes to zoning changes, that is as complicated as it gets. But when they're needed, it's an essential element of this community. So I would request that the council exercise your prerogatives and confirm Scott Gross as a member of the planning committee.
Is this a vote or a motion?
Pardon?
Just a vote or a motion?
It would be a motion and then a vote.
But I can make a motion to approve Scott Gross to our Vader City Planning Committee?
You've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Shai to approve Scott Gross and to serve as a member of our Vader City Planning Committee. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. Now is your opportunity to provide any observations or comments?
What is the term?
It's a three-year term.
Three-year, okay. I'm sorry for all these little techie questions, I just don't know, I didn't know this.
We do have an ordinance that I can provide to you.
That goes ahead. Yeah, I just didn't know, I'm sorry.
But it's an open, public meeting, and they are required to be sworn in. It's a sworn-in responsibility. So there is a chairman of the committee that serves for one year or at the will of the other members of the board or committee. So, good, any other questions, concerns? And with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent. Congratulations, I think that's worth a round of applause. I'm going to predict that the day will come in this community, it may not be within a year or so.
You think they'll make a speech? Do you want me to? Yeah, that's serious.
Scott probably would, he could. But I am going to predict that the planning committee will become more and increasingly relevant as the city regains its water system. And you should know, in case you're wondering, that the Department of Ecology has given us authorization in the letter that we went over a couple, three weeks ago for development of this community. They would enable us and approve small numbers of homes if we had somebody who wanted to build a home on property in this community. We now have the wiggle room to do that. So we aren't operating under any sort of moratorium now, which is a good sign. With that, now, we have council, oh, as far as swearing in, we don't have the paperwork ready for you, Scott, but you could come into City Hall at any time and we can take care of that for you. Normally, we like to do it in front of the public. And/or we could wait until the next city council meeting, we can do it at that time. But we'll let you know.
Better.
Thank you. With that, let's, council, to consider the Pastor Durham's request to the city, representing the Assembly of God Church, for a sign and a speed bump, or IT bumps. But were you thinking of one?
Same order, yeah.
Okay. You've had a chance, I hope, to read the prospectus about the topic. Commit with Pastor Durham. And my understanding is that you have a copy of the sign, I believe this is...
It's not to scale.
Oh, it is not?
The size is a little bit, it's an 18 by 20, something like that, so it'd be a little bit yay-wide, it's not that. It's in the front window of our building if you want to drive by and look at it. It's blue, it's a commercial sign.
Metal?
Metal, aluminum, yeah. It's smaller than the United Methodist sign, it's small, but it's rectangular. And this is the actual image that was sent to us by the sign maker. And it is aluminum, and just, all it says is, "Address 226th Street in favor of Assembly of God," just as the paper shows there.
I went over today and looked, because I'm right there on A Street, and I prefer option B, which is between the two, versus option A, which was hanging on one of those.
I agree, I would be afraid that someone would come by with a bike, catch it on their arm, it could
And do that?
So, yeah.
I was looking through this for the sizes, and I didn't see the size till you just said. But that's a big span through there.
Okay, duly noted. Now, with regard to the speed bump, note, it would be installed across A Street between 5th and 6th, somewhere between Warden Park and the church. Your primary concern was for the safety of the children, the number of whom played in that zone, and other parts of the city. And have you had any incidents of speed bumps?
There is a number of individuals living in that vicinity with large trucks that regularly race up and down the street, and my office is on the corner, so I, every day, literally every day, there are people exceeding the speed limit without any care. There are no crosswalks, there are no warning signs, there are children on bicycles, women with strollers. And I appreciate our police presence that does patrol in that area, and I see them regularly. But there are times when those people are just, it's... Some of it's done, I think, out of spite because of some previous issues related to some things that have taken place, individuals that were brought into custody regarding issues related to the church and myself personally. And so they may get a point to race past the church, gun the engine. They do slow down for that div at the road. It's sinking. They do slow down for that, because I hear it go bang, bang, when they go over. But I'm just really concerned that a child, we have some elderly people riding bicycles that don't hear well. And the way that people drive through there is, it's dangerous, and I'm afraid something could be happening.
Okay. Well, I'd say objectively, here
Pass that down, pictures of speed bumps.
I think another option that we have on that is, since that is an intersection, we could always put a four-way stop sign right there.
And another thought I had was those little plastic people that say, "Slow down."
I think those have become a target.
Do you think so?
Drive-by shooting.
Well, a stop's a good idea.
I've heard this complaint several times in these council chambers over the last couple of years, that same bit of street there.
And I know that sheriffs have apprehended the number.
Can you repeat the, is it between 5th and 6th on A Street? Yes. The one that the park is on. I'll add that to my mentality.
Thank you. Well, I think that this is a question that I would like the council to consider, if not to decide tonight, but to entertain the conversation as to who would pay for whatever solution emerges.
What is the cost factor, you know? Is it like that?
I wondered if the possibilities are going to look at speed bumps to maybe look at them in different areas that might be them as well, maybe getting a package deal? I know A Street between 7th and 9th is
You know, we used to have a four-way stop there, and we took it out there. Now it's just a race street.
Yeah, and there's that little dip there on one side, but they cross the other side of the road and on coming traffic to go around the
Okay.
It is the schoolless street.
Yeah.
To be candid here, though, it certainly would be a topic of discussion, but the agenda specifically focuses on the pastor's request.
Right.
But
And we'd be willing to put our money where our mouth is. We'd be willing to contribute towards an asphalt speed bump comment.
Asphalt? These, the price, it shows a sale price of $128?
That's, that's the kind you attach to the road?
Oh, yeah, this is the rubber bolt down.
Yeah, the bolt down, righty.
That's for 40 inches.
I'm just concerned about their holding up with the large vehicles.
Gotcha. Jason just noted that that's for 40 inches.
40 inches of length, yeah.
So
So you got it, triple, triple, yeah, big, what's the big one, is there more?
This is the first time I've seen this book, so we'd have to do some research.
We would need to do research and see what the city's legally able to do and what minimum requirements we may have.
True.
Maybe some signage required in speed bump.
Absolutely.
Even if we did the stop sign, we'd have to put up a change of
We would. But that can be done, can be done. Well, what do you say, when we, you're willing to
Well, that's what the motions are regarding. One is to approve or not approve the sign. And the other one is to approve or not approve city staff to research the which you can use those if you want or not, but that's what city has to do.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the installation of the Assembly of God chirp sign on the existing post at 7th Street. Option B in the middle, so it's C.
And if the D are okay with it as well.
So you have one motion submitted to approve the placement of the sign at 7th and A, as noted?
I second that.
Okay, yeah, we have a second.
I do.
Seconded by Mrs. Costello. Additional conversation. Here again, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent, that motion is carried. Now, would the council like me to engage in additional research on the speed bump and then bring it, put it on our next council agenda?
Yes.
Excellent, it will be done. And item three, council to consider purchase of computer for City Hall. Hopefully, you've become aware, or if not, I would inform you that for the past several days, our city clerk's computer has, after over four years of use, gone on the fritz with some sort of malfunction, bug or virus. And it's put a dramatic crimp on our ability to carry out the normal city administrative functions. So we're requesting that the council approve the appropriate action to resolve that. I know, Mr. Shai, you've had some, working for Intel as you do, some observations on it, but invite the council to engage in a solution. Well, I can tell you that we've invited, Jill has asked her husband, Ross, who works for the county, is a computer expert, and he's volunteered to assemble a computer.
Clarification, he is not a computer expert, I'm sorry, I just want to make that clear.
No, I would defend that, because compared to me, he isn't.
He does not work for the county as a computer expert, no, he does not. I just want to make that clear.
Duly noted.
He is our freebie volunteer who's willing to help us however he can with whatever knowledge he has, and he makes absolutely zero guarantees.
Okay.
I just want to make that very clear. He has not been professionally trained in any way, but is just through years of experience and his own personal knowledge.
Although, in my lengthy experience with Mr. Nielsen's assistance over the years without pay to this community, every fix that he's made has been most successful and has been worth every penny of his, in the spirit of volunteers. So I'm going to
And with all that said, the list that we have here that he gave me of the parts, he realized that he, well, Mr. Shai helped us realize that we missed one item, which happens to be a very important item, and that's the hard drive. Yeah. And that's an additional $70. He did price it out, but somehow it didn't get on the list that he gave to me, so that would be an additional $70, so that would bump the total up to around $540 for this computer.
So
And this is just his suggestion, you guys can take it or leave it. If you want to make changes, whatever.
But what we can't do, I have to throw out here, a solution has to be found quickly.
We have reports that are waiting that need to be sent in by a certain time, and I can't do them because the computer we have won't do it anymore. So this is, time is of the essence, so we do need to do whatever council decides we really kind of need to do.
And it should be noted that you've provided the funding source for it. So it's not going to bust or violate any of our budgetary funds that are available.
I can say that I'm familiar with what they're doing here in all of these parts, and this is a very, it's a very good computer, and it's a fair price.
I think so.
Good. Well, then, could we exercise a motion? I agree with your observation.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchasing of new computer equipment with the addition of the hard drive onto the parts list.
I've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Shai to approve the acquisition of the computer componentry as noted, with the addition of the hard drive, which would put it at about $540, $550. Do we have a second for that motion?
I have a second.
Seconded by Mrs. Costello. Do we have any, at this point, conversation from the council, comments?
I can't remember.
Is our problem not enough space?
No, it's been infected.
Or it's, or it's
No, it's not infected.
Oh, no?
There were no bugs found on it. The operating system is failing. It's old and it's failing. There were, there were no bugs found on it. The operating system is failing. It's old and it's failing.
The, the hard drive is becoming slowly corrupted. The hard drive is done. It's at its, it's at its useful life. And because of that, different programs they're using are no longer working. You could replace the hard, just the hard drive, I suppose. Problem is, the computer that they purchased in there was a package deal, and so they don't have the disk for Windows, so they had to buy an operating system and a hard drive. And at that point, you're at fifty percent of the cost of buying an updated system that isn't likely to fail next week. Four years is not a bad time for, for a computer that's used like this.
With that, I would put it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. All right, let's proceed now with the discussion on perks.
Thank you. I have gone over the budget. I've confirmed with Jill that I actually have in my possession the budget. And in here it says that the parks has ten thousand dollars. My question is, how much of that money is for PUD? How much of that money is for usable, that these guys can use for the fence, if any?
So, so the funds, I'm sorry, Mayor, do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, be free. I mean, there's a lot of discretion. We respect the person.
So seven, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, and since I don't have it in front of me, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe seven thousand of it was out of the, what's called the REET fund, R-E-E-T, and that's real estate excise tax. And that money was set aside from that fund specifically for capital improvements for the park. We are only allowed to use that money that we get for that real estate excise tax on capital improvements. And so council at the budget time decided to allot seven thousand. We figured that would be plenty to get what we needed left of the power put in. If we don't use all of that for the PUD and the power, you can use it for other capital improvements that can be done at the park as well. The three thousand that's in the general fund, that you can choose to use on, there's no restrictions on how that has to be used, except that the money has to be used for something that's in the park plan.
Okay.
Which is standard.
Okay, so.
So the three thousand would be open to.
It's like disposable income we have basically right now.
It's much more flexible, yeah.
Yes, and then, okay, I guess my next question is, we had four thousand and I know a couple nickels went away from the park club.
That all went to the PUD.
So that went to the PUD. So what do we have left owing?
I'd have to look it up. The last time we talked to them was last year sometime. I don't remember the exact figures, but I want to say around thirty-six hundred dollars, I think. But I, I may be wrong about that. I know it's not more than that. It would be, if I'm wrong, it would be less than that, but we still have them still.
Okay.
The majority have, has been paid, but four thousand dollars that he's put has been gone.
I just didn't, how much is owed to the PUD? Is there money in that? So if they wanted to do that fencing, like they've requested a couple times, then the money is there with that three thousand flexibility. Okay. All right, let's see, is there any other?
You need to look at your expenditure sheet that we just gave you and make sure you know how much of that has already been spent this year. I don't know that there's been very much spent, if any, but that's one thing to keep in mind, is that it may have come down a little bit.
I think we tabled.
We tabled some, I looked up.
We tabled that foundation discussion. And that six thousand dollars to do that whole foundation is a lot of money that we don't have. I mean, after having this discussion. So is, is repairing that one side what we need to be doing?
You had a conversation with Polo Totai yesterday?
Yes, I met with Polo Totai, who is a contractor, who is also on the park board, and also went and investigated and checked it out to see what, what his opinion was and what needed to be done. And so I talked to him about it and he said that, I said, "Okay, what do we need to do for the next year or maybe a little more to keep this from getting worse, to keep, make it so that we can use it and make, make sure it's not getting worse as far as the foundation issue is concerned?" And he said that it was something that wouldn't cost very much money at all and that he and his employee, which is his son, would be willing to do it along with help from park board members, that they've already discussed it, and they would be willing to help. He said some of the posts need to be raised underneath and some of them need to be lowered so that it gets leveled out. I asked him about a beam, because I thought I had heard that there was a beam underneath that needed to be replaced. And he said, "Yeah, it would probably be okay for another year, or you could just replace a portion of that beam if you want." And he wasn't sure how much that would cost, because you'd have to price the beam. And so he seemed to think that really the only real cost would be if you decided to do the beam, the cost of the beam. And other than that, maybe some plywood to block off around the sides of the jail to keep animals and people from going out for the skirting for a temporary block.
My response to that, just so you know, is that I would be extremely uncomfortable to engage in his services without some form of fair compensation. Just because a person could come back at some point in the future, I'm not saying he would, but I just throw that out there for your consideration. But he's willing to do it at no labor costs.
I have just suggested that old jail, let's get, go down and get some railroad iron at there pulling that and put four of them underneath there like this and jack it up three feet, then you got plenty of room to take the rotting everything else out from that jail. Got to do something to it.
Well, I spoke with Reggie today and same story, you know, very reasonable, just replace that one beam and make it usable. I mean, we only use it twice a year for two hours at the most, or three.
It can be done, Polo or Reggie, but I think it's a matter of park board entertaining your options and then bringing your recommendation to the council.
Question, just back to the fence thing, have they brought to us the funds needed? Because don't we have to approve them, sending that?
Depends on how much it is.
Thirty-three hundred?
Thirty-three hundred.
Is that what they, is that what the quote was for? Oh, thirty-three hundred would have to come to council for approval. I, can I say one other thing? For council's knowledge, I have put together a packet of information for the park board and have started doing some training with them on what their roles and responsibilities are as park board members, using the ordinance from the city of what their jobs are, and then also some state requirements for the city to have a park plan. And been working with them and starting to teach them, and I plan to continue to teach them, what the process is for projects and that they do need to have a big picture plan, like a five-year plan, and then to narrow it down. One, you know, what are we going to do for one year, and talking about that with them. So I think that, I don't know what happened after I left the meeting, but I think they understand that they're, they're going to be working on putting a plan together that's an updated plan, because the last one we had was from two thousand and eight. That helps keep some continuity from year to year, and it also makes sure that the way that these projects turn out is in coordination with what the city and the council want for the long-term plan for the parks as well. So, so they, I don't know if they're putting the brakes on this for a little bit or not with regard to the fence, or if they want to continue forward with that, but it needs to be included as part of the park plan technically before we're supposed to release any funds to do the project. So I think they're, they're getting on that plan updated as quick as they can.
Well, I guess my disappointment was, was just hoping we would be able to accomplish something on that foundation before May Day, because the girls won't be able to use the building. That just kind of, it's one of the only times we use it, obviously, so. And they're not going to use it if it's not fixed.
How long would it take, Kim?
Polo said it would be a one-day project, that they, it'd probably take them most of the day, but they could get it done in one day, he thought.
Is it something we could get a bid from him so that we would be fair on the labor and he could put labor into it, so we wouldn't be doing it for free?
Polo's pretty stubborn, but yeah, we, I bet we could. If the council wants to authorize us to proceed with that, offer a report.
I think that what we would need to do at this point, if we wanted to try and get it done by May Day, I think it would require council approving the mayor to initiate and put together a contract with Polo up to a certain amount dollar-wise. That way, he has the authority to take care of that so that Polo can get moving on it. If you, if you're comfortable doing that, I think that that's probably the only way we can get it done and follow the rules.
Specifically, what has to be done?
The beam.
We need to buy a beam, I guess?
Yeah, Polo knows the.
Now, the timeframe that he gave me was based on not doing the beam, just doing the re-leveling of the floor.
But he could probably come back.
He could prob, I, I would think he could come back and do the beam later, but he's thinking that re-leveling it would be sufficient to make it safe and usable for the time being.
I want to do the beam.
Councils want to make a motion?
I just don't have enough information on the beam. I have no idea what cost would look like or anything, so that would be hard to.
Well, I have a feeling that he could install a beam, but this is a temporary fix. It wouldn't have intended to be permanent. It would make it usable.
We just need it usable.
Yeah, let's make a motion.
Yeah, get a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we proceed, oh, I'll rephrase that. I would like to make a motion that Mayor Cannon's staff speak with Polo about proceeding with putting in a beam and making the repairs to the old city jail. And the dollar amount not to exceed.
Four hundred bucks? I don't think, I don't think it's going to be that much to you.
I have discretionary funding, right, authority for four hundred. Why don't we make it a thousand and that give us some wiggle room, but it would likely be considerably less than a thousand.
Not to exceed a thousand?
Yeah, okay.
Page one.
All right, so we've heard the motion submitted by Mrs. Costello to authorize the mayor and the city staff to contact Polo and authorize his expeditious work on the jail as specified not to exceed one thousand dollars, but much preferably less. All right, with that, we have a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Greer. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent. Okay, now that's action for the council. Now the report on City Hall parking.
City Hall parking. Took it upon myself, along with the assistance of Diane from city staff, and we looked up Leanne Parkham, who is the owner, the nice lady that owns the lot next to us. We had visions of parking over there. After, she phoned me, I wrote her a letter, she phoned me. She said over the years that she has been approached many times by city staff about the lot and that it was still pretty much the same as it's always been. She would like to have thirty thousand dollars for the lot. At that time, I told her that I was merely just the messenger and that I would relay this information to mayor and council, and I thanked her for responding to me.
Okay, yes.
So just as a matter of public record, we also sent her a letter two months ago. And finally threw it back from her probably about two weeks ago, maybe.
Yeah, maybe three.
Yeah, mine was February the nineteenth, I sent my little note, so, and she did call me. So anyway, that's my update on what to do with our parking issue.
Well, at least her price is consistent.
So, so I guess my next question is, is have we pursued the fire department and expanded their little parking lot?
We've had conversations with representatives there, and they were not, but maybe I don't want to speak out of turn. Would you like to articulate if you've had any conversation?
Are we talking about the one that I just told you is, is when we have meetings here and everybody parks out here, if we have a call, we have to have a place to park, or we're going to park behind people and you're not going to get your car out until we get back from our call.
Yeah, that's the problem.
I've always, I've just been here, you know, confused, because here it says, "Don't park me for EMS," and over there it doesn't say anything, so.
We put those up and nobody pays attention. They park there anyways. It used to be that you guys used to have meetings at the same time that we had in the local meetings, where we had three districts coming in and the parking was crazy. I mean, we were parking over there, you know, and it's important that if we get a fire call or an Ecall, that we're able to park our vehicles and get in our.
But see, that is a restatement of the problem. It is the reason why we're, so the question I think you're asking is have we pursued a possible solution with, by expanding their parking? And yes, we have had an informal conversation with the representative who did not take a very enthusiastic view of it for a number of reasons. However, that person was not making an official statement, but it didn't lead me to believe that there was going to be a lot of support for the idea. So that's what I can personally report.
Well, there is, my idea would be taken by some twelve-inch culvert, iron culvert, put in across the street and put it right back in front of Mrs. Parkham, and we'd have plenty of room to take and put maybe five cars here and across the street. You'd be able to park another ten cars if you had culvert and fill the ditch in. It might be cheaper than any, any other way.
That's a thought, yeah. The city could do that, and there might be some expense involved with it, of course, but.
Not thirty thousand dollars.
Hold it wide in the street.
Yes.
So that's like put a, put a culvert in where the ditch is right here, where we.
Yeah.
Both sides.
Oh.
Need a more street.
At least you could get off the street. That's a very narrow street, but.
You got a lot of room with a culvert to the ditch if you use good culvert, to put in a steel culvert, twelve-inch. And you'd have enough room for, just across the street, you'd have enough room for ten, at least ten cars.
Street easement is sixty feet wide.
Wide enough, eighty-five?
It's sixty feet.
Sixty feet wide.
It's making it on one side, so.
Take the full easement, yeah.
But still have to be.
Okay, well, let me make as a matter of information here. I don't want to speak excessively out of turn here, but even if she did offer that for ten thousand or five thousand, city can't just decide it's going to buy land, and you have to have it part of your comprehensive plan. So you'd need to insert that in the comprehensive plan, which we'll be working on, by the way, with our city planner. His name is Gary Cooper, and that's two thousand and seventeen is when I think it's due. So that's something to take under advisement for future reference. There, but with that, then we can continue to discuss that option maybe at our next council meeting with regard to expanding our easement or using it. With that, if there's. With that, if there's no other council, yes.
Sheriff's report?
Oh, we, they didn't have a lot to add to it, so they were going to do it at our next meeting.
Once a month.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that. With that, then declare this council meeting adjourned at seven thirty-seven.